Welcome everyone to City Council, January 17th. General Council Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order and have a real call please. Councilmember Dennehy?
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher?
I, or here.
And Councilmember B. Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Stein?
Here.
Councilmember Tracy?
Here.
Councilmember Worthington?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Here.
Mayor Smith? Here. Let's all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a citizen's request to speak to council and I would like to invite Chuck Klein to address council please. You have three minutes.
First, thanks for having me. Good evening, council. I would like to address my concerns to you about the homeless population in my neighborhood. In recent weeks, we have had three fires that I'm aware of in my neighborhood due to homeless camps. On January 5th at 12:00 a.m., I was notified by our PD that there was a fire behind my property and they needed to access my property to contain it. I have provided a picture of what I witnessed.
Sorry Chuck, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but can you bring the microphone a little bit closer to your mouth so the public can hear?
Is that better?
Yes.
Do I need to start over?
Yeah, we will start everything all over again. That way everyone can hear you.
Okay. So, good evening.
Can you state your address, sir? Your address?
509 Ellsworth Avenue.
Thank you.
So, I would like to address my concerns to you about the homeless population in my neighborhood. In recent weeks, we've had three fires that I'm aware of in my neighborhood due to homeless camps. On January 5th at 12:00 a.m., I was notified by our police department that there was a fire behind my property and they needed to access my property to contain it. I have provided a picture of what I witnessed and I've given that to the mayor.
Yeah, it's getting passed around.
We've had one other fire in the exact same location this past summer. Two weeks ago, there was a homeless camp fire under the Ninth Street Bridge that caused damage and once again took our law enforcement resources away from the reason they are paid by the city to protect our community. I have personally seen individuals walking around my camper, walking in the neighborhood on private property without permission. Multiple items have been stolen in our area, not to mention the community mailbox location that has been vandalized and items taken from the mailboxes. The cleanup of these camps costs the state, local agencies, taxpayers a phenomenal amount of money. As an example, the state had to hire a contractor to remove the homeless camp under the four-mile waterway that cost a phenomenal amount of money. And I'm not talking on behalf of CDOT. I work for the Colorado Department of Transportation, but I was the region, the area supervisor at the time and you wouldn't believe the amount that that cost the citizens of Colorado. With all that being said, I'm asking this council for help on my behalf as well as my neighbors. I don't have an answer to the problem, but that's why I'm asking the council for. The overwhelming homeless population has not only become a hazard, but it is affecting our neighborhood personally. I believe that this, I believe if this was happening on your property or in the neighborhood, it would be a concern for you as well. I thank you for your time. It's become personal now that, and I don't know how many of you have seen the picture, but when I got up and the police department comes to my house and I see the fire there where I store hay for my livestock, I have a tractor, I have other implements that are sitting there, it's a concern to me and my family. And another big part of this is when we start missing mail out of our mailboxes and they're found other places, the mail has been found in different places and brought back to us. I'm asking you guys for help. I'm fed up with it and I don't want to be responsible for somebody on my property if my dogs were to go after them or whatever it may be. That's my property and it's personal, so that's what I'm here to talk to you about.
Well, thank you for coming here Chuck and we definitely want to hear about these issues. It costs the city a lot of money to clean up after the homeless encampments as well and public safety is of paramount importance to us. Something that's in your favor is that while on public lands, there's, we have a lot of limitations, but when you have people trespassing on your property, we have a lot more opportunities for enforcement because you have a right to protect your private property. And I would like to suggest that we meet with you and our police department and some of your neighbors to talk about what's been going on in your neighborhood and maybe some tools that we can use to help make this a less likely place where homeless, they're gonna, they're gonna learn really fast that this isn't gonna be a comfortable place for them to be hanging out and, and causing problems for you and your neighbors. We have your contact information. I would like to get your email address too though.
Okay. You wanna write it down?
Yeah.
Do you want my personal or my working?
It is up to you.
I'd rather give my personal email. Again, I don't wanna talk on behalf of CDOT.
Yeah. But for you and your neighborhood, I don't know if it is on here. I didn't see it. I didn't see it on here. That'll be easier to connect you to our police chief and our corresponders. Cory?
I guess two things I would, I would point out. One is, and I don't know if the Mayor Pro Tim was gonna mention this or not, but at his initiation, council will be considering in the next several weeks, an ordinance that will actually make the penalty for trespass more severe and include potential jail time, which for the Canyon City Municipal Court is unusual. So, it's an, it's an additional tool of, the city's been doing a lot of attempted enforcement, but it's another, it's one additional tool. The other thing I would recommend, and this is, this is based on, I told the mayor this a couple minutes ago, I am hearing through the grapevine that the state legislature may be considering a law that would frankly significantly impair Canyon City's ability to enforce homelessness with what's known as a right-to-rest law. And so, it's always good to start at the local level, but I would encourage you to talk to your legislators as well, because that's, that would severely impact if adopted our ability to enforce.
And that's, again, just, just up the street for me. They have been in a shed that I guess they can't get rid of them now. They're living in a, in somebody's personal shed, right, very close to where we are that...
They should be able to get rid of them if...
Again, I don't know. I just know that we're all having a lot of problems in that area and I don't want to get myself put into a situation with somebody on my property going into my barn not knowing if somebody's in there or not. I could end up in trouble myself and I don't want to do that, so.
Just for your awareness and for the general public, the discussion on the stronger or stricter trespass penalties will be February 8th at 6:00 p.m.
That'll be here?
That'll be here.
Okay, sir. Appreciate that.
Councilmember Stein?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wondered, have you reported the theft of your mail to the post office yet?
Yet, yes.
You have, okay. Because that is, there are federal investigators and I, the reason I say that is I know there are many people in Canyon City who have open mailboxes like yours that aren't locked?
Correct.
That are suffering from the same thing. So, they, they do have investigators working on it? So, just make sure they don't?
No, they told me, I'm the one that, I'm...
We need, so you need to be at the mic?
I'm sorry, I just don't mind.
Yeah.
Please to talk, but Tori Klein, 509 Ellsworth Avenue. So, I spoke with the United States Postal Service. They said that it is a federal offense and that we have to do all of, anything like that would have to be a report to the police department and that they wouldn't be able to do anything about it. We have also talked to the post office about getting the lockbox there. They will not pay for it. We would have to come together with the rest of our neighborhood and come up with that money ourselves.
Okay.
Yeah, just so you know, it's $3,000.
Yes ma'am, and I knew that you had just gotten one.
So, yeah, over Christmas, I was in the post office when a gentleman was having a lot of problems and they took all his information and said they had investigators, so...
Maybe I need to speak with someone else.
Well, that's possible, yeah.
But they've had, like, we can only get mail order medication. We're not allowed to get our medication through local pharmacies and they've stolen our medication and then that makes a problem because we can no longer get the medication again and we need that. So, that was another issue.
Yeah, maybe go back to the post office and, and, because the gentleman that was in the day that I was there, that's the way he, he took out the, he took the information because it is, it's a federal offense. And our, our police department, I don't know, they could probably refer it, but it seems like it needs to start with them.
That was my thought too. So, I will check again and speak with someone else. Since I have the floor, may I ask one other question in regards to the trespassing? Is there a difference with it being an agricultural location? Okay, that would, my information...
As long as it's in the city, there's no difference.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Just, just so you know, if, if you're speaking with the post office and you have an employee that, that may not be fully aware of what powers the post office has, you know, be respectful of course, but you can always ask to speak to the postmaster and they can help you also.
Thank you. I didn't realize that they weren't knowledgeable. I thought they were telling me the truth.
And again, I don't want the council to think I'm complaining. I'm here to ask for help and so, but I appreciate everybody listening to me.
Expect an email soon from me that'll be connecting you to our law enforcement and for an opportunity to get together and meet.
And I'm willing to help anywhere that I can as well, so.
Thank you. Thank you for coming to be solution-minded. Councilmember Dennehy?
And I'm just gonna say thank you for coming in because, believe me, we've had this discussion with different neighborhoods when it's been discussed. I've even brought up my own street and it, it never affects you really that much till it becomes real close to you and then it affects you big time and I know exactly how you feel and with, you know, back in our neighborhood and, and I have a hayfield as well and haven't been back there, but I've got big dogs, so.
And that's, that's my other concern is, thank God I didn't have livestock in there at the time, but when, when the fire department and the police come in and they're just opening and cutting gates and whatever they gotta do, I mean, it could've been a whole nother problem, but thank God it wasn't and, and I appreciate, I appreciate the fact that I'm not the only one that thinks this way, so. Yep. Hey, thank you.
Yes, thank you. We are now able to take council member announcements. Councilmember Tracy?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to mention, as I do from time to time and others do too, that we, the city's Energy Advisory Committee continues to meet. We're still meeting on a twice-a-month schedule, which is generally the second and fourth Mondays of the month, 10:00 a.m. here at City Hall, back in, at that table back there. We're still working diligently on the original mission of the committee, which was to see if there's a way the city can achieve more affordable electricity for residents and businesses in the community. And then I also want to mention the Community Advisory Group for the Superfund site just south of Canyon City, the former site of a uranium mill. As I've mentioned before, the Community Advisory Group meets monthly. We just had our meeting this afternoon. It's usually third Tuesdays. We now meet at 4:00 p.m. We meet in person at the PCC Fremont Campus and also by Zoom. Our Economic Development Director, Rick Harmon, was there today, so we appreciated that. We're at a, one of these really, I think fairly critical points in time. The company that owns the site now has recently submitted a work plan proposing some new environmental testing so that we can get a really clear, concrete idea of what areas outside of the site, such as the Lincoln Park area that's had past contamination and other areas that may not yet be identified, so that we can really be sure that we're finding out where is the contamination so that it can be appropriately cleaned up. We, as a Community Advisory Group, under the Superfund law, we are allowed to have an EPA-funded technical advisor and that technical advisor provided a report tonight on this proposed work plan with 28 comments of things that the technical folks suggest that the community members of the CAG request, some changes to the work plan. And in general, we feel so far, and we're not finished with our review, but we feel that they're missing quite a bit of what needs to be done. So, just want to alert you to that. It's really important for people, not only those who live in Lincoln Park who may have a contaminated private water well, but others who live in the area. So, just keep in mind, third Tuesdays of the month, 4:00 p.m. Thanks.
And we do have our Vision Committee meeting tomorrow night, starting at 5:00 p.m. here in these chambers and we're gonna be talking about the business licensing draft legislation or code that we have in front of us, as well as talking about a new state-led and copper rule that we have to, we may have to deal with here pretty quickly.
Thank you. Ryan, you might wanna share some of the data, but we'd like to invite the entire community to come to the Royal Gorge History Museum, 10 o'clock a.m. to reveal two dinosaur fossils that have been discovered in Fremont County. This has been like going like hot, like just hot fire. Wanna talk, talk a little bit about that? Something like that? Yeah.
Yes, so the post and the press release that we put out, even since Friday when I updated council, we've had 370,000 impressions, nearly 20,000 different engagements. The post has been shared over 1,200 times, 6,500 reactions, numerous independent posts and interview requests from various news agencies. Even today, there's, there was some additional requests for interviews. So, that is all leading up to the unveiling of the fossils themselves. That will be Saturday, January 21st at 10:00 a.m. and that's at the Royal Gorge History Museum at 612 Royal Gorge Boulevard.
Very exciting times for Fremont County and Canyon City. Something else that's really exciting for Canyon City is for the Colorado Municipal League, which will be in June up in, at the Gaylord in Denver. They have a number of workshops and panels about contemporary issues that municipalities are facing in Colorado and Canyon City has been invited to participate in two of those panels. So, we're really excited to be able to have Chief Schick and Ryan Stevens on a panel representing the police department for creating positive internal and community culture and employee recruitment and retention. So, it's really exciting. And also Built for Zero, DeeDee Clemmons and a Built for Zero representative will be joining another community, actually ironically, to talk about the efforts that have been happening in eradicating homelessness in Fremont County and the efforts that they have been doing. So, we're really excited to have Canyon City so well represented. If there's no other announcements, we do have a consent agenda to go over tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Item 7A is to approve the minutes for the regular city council meeting on January 3rd, the general government meeting on January 4th, and special city council meeting January 3rd. 7B authorizes the mayor to accept the resignation of Cindy Norrell from the Historic Preservation Commission. 7C authorizes the mayor to reappoint Chris Jenkins, Mike Madone, James Nelson to the Historic Preservation Commission. 7D authorizes the mayor to sign a water service contract for 839 McKenzie Avenue. 7E extends bid number 1622 for water stock parts in an amount not to exceed $260,000. 7F awards bid 1323 for two 2023 Chevy Colorado 4x4 work trucks to Daniel's Long Chevrolet in an amount not to exceed $69,990. 7G awards bid 1823 John Deere 410P Tier Baco to Four Rivers Equipment in an amount not to exceed $149,885.05. 7H awards bid 2123 John Deere 4052R compact utility tractor to Pastio, Patesto? Testio, thank you, Brothers Equipment in an amount not to exceed $41,800. 7I awards bid 2223 S770T4 Bobcat Skid steer loader to Bobcat of the Rockies in an amount not to exceed $77,516. 7J awards bid 2323 C5500 cab and chassis service truck to Daniel's Long Chevy in an amount not to exceed $63,801.64. 7K is to receive and file a list of bills and 7L is to receive and file, I'm sorry, 7K was the monthly budget summary and 7L is to receive and file a list of bills.
Councilmember Tracy?
I would suggest that we remove, not remove 7D from the consent agenda, but allow for commentary on that. We've had some good additional information that was shared by email that I think would be helpful to share with the public about 7D, the water service contract.
So, should we just go ahead and have a discussion?
Whatever you prefer.
If that's all right? I'd like to, yeah, go ahead. We are, we have a representative for Fremont paving, come on up and then Travis will have you come up as well when he's done. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, council, city servants. I appreciate the opportunity to come tonight and to be included on the agenda. I am the local Canyon City manager for Fremont Paving and Ready Mix, so I just help in logistics and make sure that the, the operation is, is efficient and, and effective for the local community. That's, that's what I try and help ensure. And that's kind of the spirit of, of what we're hoping to, to enter an agreement with the city in signing the contract that we've signed. I would understand if there's some questions. I'd just like to provide a little bit of context about where this came from. We've been in the county for a long time and water is a very important resource for, for both concrete and asphalt. Just to give you an idea, just to kinda like, I imagine there's a question, like how much water are we talking about? So, a concrete mixer truck holds 10 yards of concrete, okay? Every yard of concrete has approximately 34 gallons of water. So, that would mean every concrete mixer truck that you see driving around has approximately 342, 400 gallons of water inside of it. It's an important resource. Until about three years ago, we relied upon a spring, actually, believe it or not. We have a well, but we relied upon a spring, which we had rights to and, and that fed our concrete batch plant and also the asphalt plant. There was a little bit of development across 115 without getting into specifics and the water pretty much disappeared. It's what was before a steady supply turned into a trickle. And so, we've been hauling water basically from the bulk station that the city provides at the roundabout there in 115 and Ninth. And that's been an outstanding service for us. We wouldn't be able to operate without that. But there's three basic reasons that we would really appreciate the opportunity to receive city water at the commercial rate. The first one is convenience. We have an individual that drives a 2,000 gallon water truck. He's actually a really outstanding 70-year-old man. He used to be the mayor of Brookside and he has it as a part-time job, so he'll drive back and forth from the bulk water station regularly. But that's one person, one truck, a set of tires, diesel. It's a lot of man-hours that goes into delivering water, which affects our operating costs, which is the second item. It would help us definitely cut costs. The, the price of 1,000 gallons of bulk water is double the price that you would get with a two-inch water tap. Of course, there's a tap fee that's also baked in there, so the costs aren't quite that straightforward, but over time, I think it would, it would be a huge benefit to us. And the last one is autonomy. We get scared sometimes because if that bulk water station were to ever shut down, we would be pretty much, we'd be in trouble. Our sustainability is directly tied to that bulk water station at this point. So, this would help us be autonomous over time. And then I guess just the last thing, because I imagine this is where some of the questions will fall. An average day for us, as far as consumption goes, is around 3,000 gallons. That's an average day. And then we can have peak days that go from 10,000 and 10,000 plus. And why could that happen? That could happen when you have an operation like Love's or the fire station this last year, if they're ordering 300 to 400 yards a day and you're also running asphalt for someone like the Colorado Department of Transportation. There's water involved in both of those processes and it's, it's just a matter of what the product requires. There's really no way around the usage. So, again, I appreciate you guys' time, the opportunity to be here and if there are any questions, I'm more than happy.
Are there any questions at this time? Councilmember Tracy?
I just wanted to be sure that the provisions in the contract, the water contract, are all, I assume, acceptable to you and the company.
Yes, ma'am. I, I believe that there's a number of provisions there. One is to make sure that if we were to take over a certain amount of water, that we would also need to replenish the city's shares, which would be, we trade one share to the hydraulic ditch. That is understood and we will be handing that over. We currently possess it. And we're also willing to be annexed into the city if it were ever to come to that. Also very aware of that. There are those, we would need to establish easements with the Soisters, who's a private party, Fremont Sanitation District. We would need easements through both of those properties. They're both well on their way. I think there might be one more requirement, but those are, I think, the heavy hitters.
Yeah, thanks. That answers my question.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight to help us understand your operations better. We appreciate this. It speaks a lot when the applicant actually shows up and is here to address city council. That definitely bodes well.
Yeah, thank you for, thank you for having us. We consider ourselves, because de facto, we truly are very much on the same team. We're, we're a private business, but at the same time, we're very much in the business of building the city. I personally really appreciate what all of you do. I try to come, I try to understand what, what's going on in the city and, you know, I think maybe more people tune in online than we're aware of. You're probably familiar with those numbers, but in any case, I recognize the importance. And if you guys ever need anything or, or have any questions about whatever could possibly pop up, feel free to reach out because I think we're very much on the same team. Thank you.
I'm really glad that you, that we're team players. I love to hear that.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Dennehy?
And I just wanna say real quick, because I don't know if everybody knows, but you know, Aerie Brothers does a lot and they're, they're owner, I mean, you guys are a big part of our community and, and I know that. I've seen what you've done in the past for even different events and, you know, I just wanna say even, just thank you for that. And I think if everybody's aware of what they do, it's a company that, I mean, they're here, their ownership is involved in the community and it's, they've done nothing but great things in the community with us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Travis, did you have anything you wanted to add about the water contract? Okay. Are there any further questions concerning the water contract? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And I would add that Travis has been outstanding to work with in the process, which I know that occasionally you'll hear, you know, different, when, when private business has to deal with, with city business, sometimes pace and communication can be something which is, you know, some people can have an issue with. That has not been my experience. Been one of the most receptive individuals that I worked with anywhere. I call and like, you know, I'm probably, we're probably like above 80% as far as answering goes, which is outstanding. I don't reach that. So, just very thankful with how receptive everyone's been.
Awesome to hear. Thank you. Jim Johnson, would you like to come up and, there may be some questions for you concerning some of our contracts as well and... you concerning some of our contracts as well and that are on the agenda? We appreciate you taking the time to be here as well.
No problem. Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. So I've got five bids on there as a reason I showed up tonight, in case you had any questions on any of the, uh, equipment bids. Um, try to be as transparent as we can. Uh, it's gotten very difficult to purchase equipment and vehicles, and, uh, we kinda have to really change the way we, we do things. They, uh, we used to, it was pretty straightforward. We would put in our budget numbers. They'd be approved by November. We could order the vehicles in January, get them sometime that year. That's not the way it works anymore. We have to order the vehicles usually in April or May. We have to commit to them. They don't really hold us to the commitment, but they can't order, the dealers can't order them from GM or Ford without a commitment anymore. So the pricing isn't even out on the vehicles that I'm getting bids for and having to commit to. So it's really making things difficult. Um, they don't have to stick to state bid anymore. Uh, they can do a price increase in the middle of the year after you've ordered vehicles. It's, it's, uh, been a very difficult couple of years, and it, it doesn't seem to get much better. But, uh, when I get a quote to do my budget numbers in June or July to get them ready, they're good for 10 days. And, uh, so a lot of times the, the, uh, we'll have significant, uh, increases. I'm still waiting on a backhoe that we ordered last January, and it's been produced this week. We may, it's, and that's in the U.K. And we may have it by March. We had to carry that forward. Last year, five vehicles that I ordered, uh, work trucks were canceled, uh, after the GM put a $2,200 price increase after the order. And then two months later, because not enough orders were canceled, GM just canceled the order. So we didn't have an opportunity to buy those trucks. Again, it was too late in the year. So those are the kind of things we're, we're looking at now. So, um, I try to be as transparent as I can on, on orders, but we have to do things a little different now than we used to, and hopefully it'll get back to the way it was. But, uh, it's really difficult, uh, trying to buy equipment or vehicles anymore. So, um, I appreciate your patience with the process, and, uh, hopefully we'll, uh, be able to get some vehicles bought, you know, this, this year, and they won't get canceled. Um, that's just my hope. But, uh, we'll keep you, keep you abreast. So if you have any questions on any of those bids, I'll be happy to answer.
Any questions? All right. Well, thank you for being here, Jim, and for your perseverance.
Okay.
Yeah. Any, any other questions on the consent agenda in general? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion. Councilmember Smith?
Madam Mayor and council, I move to accept the consent agenda.
Second?
Spin a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call vote. Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
B. Smith?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Thank you, council. Thank you, staff. Ryan, um, let's hear your administrator's report.
Well, you took the, the big section of it. I was gonna-
Well, we had a good-
I was gonna talk about the fossils and-
That's so exciting.
Um, one of the things that we're currently working on as part, uh, it's actually written into the city charter after a census is done, um, you know, making sure that the district boundaries for city council are even. Uh, so we will be having a public hearing in February regarding, uh, rezoning or redistricting of the city council maps. Uh, so that will be coming. Just wanna put that on your radar. And then, um, the other thing that's a bit exciting, um, at least for me, um, is that we're, we're processing the final payment on City Hall. So City Hall was built 20 years ago with certificates of participation, and, uh, we're currently working on final, uh, processing that final payment. So City Hall will be paid off.
It's been, what, 20 years?
Happy to answer any questions?
Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, not a question. I just wanted to flag, um, in the administrator's report that you had mentioned that, um, the resolution to create a new water committee would likely be brought in the first meeting in February. Just wanted to flag that since we had so much public interest in the water meeting and in the potential water committee, um, so that I believe would be February 6th at 6:00 P.M. If folks are interested in kind of what the charter of that may, may look like. Thanks.
And when you bring that, will you have like a general, like, the, the committee seats that we will need to fill? Cause we usually try to have a, cover all of our bases, so representation is at the table for-
We will. The resolution will have all of that proposed, and if council wants to make some tweaks that night, absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ryan tonight?
Okay. Well, we appreciate all the good work that's happening in Canyon City and amongst our staff. They are of excellent quality, and we really appreciate it all. Um, but there is no further business for us. This is a short meeting. It's kind of ex, it's kinda nice. Hope you all get home, get home safe in the snow, and this meeting is adjourned.